I'd like to start by extending our congratulations to Noe Ortega on his appointment as the new Acting Secretary of Education. Mr. Ortega has proven himself to be a thoughtful and insightful member of PDE's executive team, and I look forward to working with him in his new leadership role. We'll have a chance to hear from him directly a little bit later in our agenda. I'd also like to welcome Dr. Tanya Garcia, who recently joined the department as the new Deputy Secretary of Post-Secondary and Higher Education. We look forward to getting to know Dr. Garcia and hearing from her as a regular participant in future meetings at our Council of Higher Education. Before we dive into our agenda, I'd like to briefly address the logistics of how we'll conduct this virtual meeting. All State Board members have speaking permissions to participate in the discussion throughout the meeting. Members of the public will be muted until we arrive at each opportunity for public comment. At those times, we'll direct you on how to participate to address the board if you're on the webinar or just on the phone. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. I also want to announce that this meeting will be recorded via Zoom's webinar platform. At this time, I'd like to ask our administrative assistants to call roll for attendance. Okay, Stephanie?
Yes. Mr. Agress?
Present.
Honorable Achele?
Present.
Dr. Barker?
Present.
Mr. Barrett?
Present.
Dr. Bracy Green?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Carnicella?
Present.
Senator Dinaman? Ms. Dunji Glenn?
Here.
Ms. Griffin? Dr. Gunter Smith?
Here.
I'm sorry, was that Ann Griffin? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Oh, Gunter Smith.
Dr. Gunter Smith, thank you. Dr. Keeling?
Here.
Honorable Lolly Green?
Here.
Senator Langerhulk? Dr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Rankin?
Here.
Representative Roebuck?
Here.
Representative Sonny?
Here.
Ms. Sultana? Ms. Swigard? Ms. Farmer White?
Here.
Dr. Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. It's been a few months since the Board of Career and Technical Education has convened. Therefore, our first item of business is to catch up on approval of the minutes from this board's last meeting on March 18th, 2020. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Agress.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Lee Burkett for an update on activity related to career and technical education. Dr. Burkett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Just a few updates from the report that you should have in front of you. The Career and Technical Centers were recipients of the federal GIRS funding, and the purpose of that was to assist them in providing career and technical education during the summer and currently during the school year. The activities allowed them to purchase personal protective equipment, offering summer activities, including opportunities to earn industry credentials, and to take the NOTD exam for the 2020 graduates. We used the Perkins formula with an additional dollars to support English learners, and where the CTCs had 20 or more English learners, they received additional funding to support activities. Other Perkins-related information, we have been working closely with the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, and Office of Career and Technical and Adult Education regarding the methods of administration, which is the responsibility that states have in administering the civil rights regulations. This is applicable to career and technical education. We're the only entity that has this responsibility. USDE issued new guidance earlier in the year. OCR, or the Office of Civil Rights, informed all states of the new memorandum of procedures, and under this new memorandum, states are to use the Perkins accountability measures to determine which schools appear to show the greatest disparity among the protected student groups. And then those with the greatest disparity will be those who will be selected for the civil rights review. Using the new method of administration, we will be visiting, and it'll be virtual this year, six secondary schools and one post-secondary institution. And the criteria are outlined in the actual report. We are in the process of preparing the annual Perkins report for the U.S. Department of Education. It's called the Consolidated Annual Report, or the CAR, and it's due December the 31st of this year. The report this year includes CTE enrollment and a narrative section. The narrative addresses how the state has used the federal Perkins funds in the previous year to achieve the goals of the Perkins State Plan. In the past, we typically submit information on each of the accountability measures, but because of the transition year, we are only submitting data on enrollments. Today, the department announced that nearly $1.2 million were awarded to 32 Career and Technical Centers and two high schools across the state so that they can purchase new equipment to train students in high-demand occupations. We look for the recipient to actually align to the needs of local employers, and again, the equipment is to provide hands-on training to the students in the programs that are aligned to the needs of local employers. The maximum grant allowed is $50,000, and each grant is to have a dollar-for-dollar match, which could be a local source either through local dollars or a relationship in kind or financial contribution from business and industry partners. Another update, since the report was written, we have been working with the schools. They have expressed concern, obviously because of the pandemic, that the onsite reviews are difficult for them to work on, to address at this time. So we have notified the schools that were scheduled for an evaluation visit this year that we are resetting the five-year cycle, and we will reschedule the visits beginning with the 2122 school year. Many of the schools were very appreciative of that fact. In your report is a section on the accreditation. We had two CTCs that their accreditation was expiring this month. That's Lehigh Technical Institute and York Career and Technical Center. However, due to the pandemic and because the CTCs did not have past issues regarding accreditation during their last visit, as well as based on the annual reports that they submit every August, we did contact the U.S. Department of Education, and we discussed with them extending their accreditation for one year. USDE has agreed to that extension. Therefore, we have extended their accreditation status until November 2021. However, we'll continue to monitor the pandemic, and if we can visit the schools sooner, we will do that. The other thing with Perkins, there is a requirement that some of the state leadership funds be used to support the recruitment of special population students into career and technical education. Special population students, just as a reminder, it's individuals with disabilities, the economically disadvantaged youth, students preparing for non-traditional fields, single parents out of workforce individuals, English learners, homeless individuals, youth who are in or aged out of foster care, and a youth who has parents in the armed forces. So we started last year to develop a video that schools could use for recruiting special populations into the career and technical education programs. Let me see if I can make this work. Let me share my screen. It's just a short video. Not sure how I can do this. Let me see. Whoops. Can you see my screen before we go too far?
Yes.
We can see it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, here it comes.
Okay, right here. This one is...
So again, it's just a short video. It's 15 seconds so far, and we released that in October. We've provided that to the Career and Technical Centers and high schools. In October, we had 164 impressions, and the view rate is slightly above 15% the platform average, and it's viewed on an average of 8.2 seconds, or 55% of the video. Typically, only 50% of the video is reviewed. So next step with the recruitment activities, each year we have to continue to utilize the state leadership dollars on the recruitment. We're thinking of taking each of the special populations categories and developing a new video specific to a given special population category. With that, I'll end my report and see if you have any questions or comments or ideas on the future video.
Hey, Dr. Burkett. This is Dr. Bracy Green, and I actually wanted to start there. It's a good start with the videos. The idea that came to mind as I was looking at is that I don't know what percentage off the top of my head of CTE students in Pennsylvania who enter post-secondary. And I don't know if you have that data, but it would be important to know whether or not. I know they have among the highest high school graduation rates, but the college-going rates, I would love to know that. And so if recruitment is something that we can look at, it'd be great to have a competition among CTE students who've gone to college to create a video to recruit other peers like them, particularly aligned with our high-growth industries in Pennsylvania. So whether it's advanced manufacturing or ag, some of these, you know, I think the creativity there would be, that was one idea that came to my mind. Get the kids who've gone on to college to study, and also those who've actually gone straight into a job. Let them compete, and let's figure out a way to give them a prize, or maybe have a semester tuition at the College of Their Choice in Pennsylvania, something like that, to get them on board. I did have one good, just a quick question about the PA Career Zone and Up the Ladder. I don't know if that's for the elementary and middle school?
Yes.
I would presume that Career Link is for the high school level and early college level? Is that where those students would go for career information?
Yes. Yes, as you indicated, Up the Ladder is for the elementary-age students, and the Career Zone itself then is for junior, or I'm sorry, middle school and high school and beyond.
Okay. And are those two things aligned with the ONET at Department of Labor?
Yes, they're aligned with the ONET. We also work with Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry to make sure that the information there is up to date as well.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to use an acronym that isn't familiar. Dr. Burkett, can you explain what ONET is so that we're not both smacked on our wrists for being rude?
Okay, so ONET, wait, I'll have to Google it. I can't remember what the acronym stands for.
It's the Occupational Information Network, and it's basically the way that the Department of Labor categorizes occupations, the knowledge, skills, and abilities that are required for them, as well as different elements as, you know, what kind of personality traits are, you know, appropriate for different jobs. It's much more than that, but that's it in a nutshell.
Way to bring yourself into the limelight, Dr. Garcia. We like you already. That's super helpful, but I think ONET, knowing that we have this continuum of ways to explore career paths across the K-20 pipeline, I think is extremely helpful. So thank you.
Okay, are there any more other questions or comments for Dr. Burkett?
Yes, I had a question. This is Sandra Dunji Glenn. Hello, Dr. Burkett, and again, thank you for always a very informative report. You may have answered this at a previous meeting, so forgive me if you have. Given what we're going through with the pandemic, and that many, if not all, of our CTE programs may require some number of hours of internship or hands-on or, you know, site-related activities, and that's limited, what accommodations are being made by the credentialing agencies around that? Because we have, what, juniors and seniors or juniors who missed part of last year and now missing much of this year? How is that being handled?
Yes, so in part, the GIRS grant has been supportive of the students who graduated last year. Some of the CTCs did offer summer classes for finishing the programs and for that industry credentialing. Others have brought students back in the fall to help them earn those industry credentials and finish some of the hands-on training. A number of the CTCs are a mix, hybrid and virtual learning. It would depend on what the student, parent, guardian decided to pursue. The State Board of Cosmetology has made a number of changes in their requirements. They've increased the number of hours that students can earn toward their licensure. They've increased that. I think they've doubled it. And then there's the opportunity for students to actually go into a salon, and some of the previous requirements have been relaxed for those students to continue gaining that hands-on experience in the salon. Other than that, I'm not sure if any other industry credentialing organization has made concessions.
Dr. Burkett, this is Jamie Green again. I just have a question. Have we considered in the state the use of virtual, what we call the cave in education, where, for example, there is technology that allows students to go into, and for everybody else, if you've ever seen the Star Trek holodeck, it allows you to actually go in and replicate that and get the hands-on training. Both Microsoft and Verizon have this technology. Our Department of Defense has the technology to accelerate cognition, and I'm just wondering if that's an alternative. We're seeing virtual reality, augmented reality being used in job training in the corporate sector. I'm wondering if we could transfer that over to, or make that available if we had any resources. Perhaps Dr. Garcia and Dr. Ortega can look into this, because to Sandra's point, there are multiple ways to get the hands on, and some of the proficiency can be demonstrated in a virtual reality, augmented reality context, and we have the corporate partners in the Commonwealth who can provide access to that. I do know that Rowan University has a cave in New Jersey, but I think there are a couple in Pennsylvania that may have it. And it's called a cave. Don't ask me the acronym, you all. But it's what we call, and it's like a cognitive accelerator, gives you the sense that you belong in that space, and you're actually doing the work in that space. So again, the Star Trek holodeck is the easiest example of that that I can provide, but I think that would really support Commonwealth CTE students who have to meet that hands-on obligation.
Well, I know, again, looking at the State Board of Cosmetology, if the student is at home, they can do either YouTube or video, their actual, if they're setting hair, and then they can either do that live, or they can send that video to the teacher, for that teacher then to grade that or to provide feedback on that. I think a number of CTCs are doing that. I don't know about the augmented reality, though.
But it would be really interesting to find out if that's something that's available, because we don't know how long this is going to continue, and just in terms of making some of this credentialing even more accessible to locations or parts of our states where students may have limited access. So just, again, very interesting way to continue to use technology to continue, you know, to advance our, advance us to our goals. So thank you both for that information.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Dr. Burkett.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public comment. If there are any members of the public participating via webinar that would like to address the State Board of Career and Technical Education, please indicate by selecting the raise-your-hand icon on the toolbar. Staff will unmute you one at a time, and your comments will be limited to three minutes per person.
Karen, at this time, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, all right. If there are any members of the public participating only via telephone that would like to speak now, we'll unmute the line and ask for the names of each person who wishes to speak. Staff will record a list of those who want to speak, and then we'll call on you individually to provide comment. Your comments will be limited to three minutes per person.
Karen, at this time, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, all right. If there are any members of the public participating only via telephone that would like to speak now, we'll unmute the line and ask for the names of each person who wishes to speak. Staff will record a list of those who want to speak, and then we'll call on you individually to provide comment. Your comments will be limited to three minutes per person.
I have unmuted the callers that are on the conference line, if you wish to speak. Please speak up. It looks as if we have none.
There are no action items or any announcements for the Board of Career and Technical Education. Okay, then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the Board for Career and Technical Education. Is there a motion?
So moved, Lee.
Okay. Second?
Agress.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned. We'll move directly to the meeting of the State Board of Education, and I'd like to call the, to order the 359th meeting of the board. Our first item of business is approval of the minutes from our September 9, 2020 meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, I'd like to recognize Dr. Perry for a report from the School and University Safety Committee.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and preliminarily, just want to congratulate Secretary Ortega in his new role, and also congratulate Dr. Garcia in her new role. So we're looking forward to your leadership. Thank you. The School and University Safety Committee met this morning to conduct review of the Model Memorandum of Understanding published in our Safe Schools Regulations at Chapter 10. The school code tasks us with conducting this review every two years to determine whether any changes are necessary to the MOU. You may recall that we developed the regulations published at Chapter 10 as required by the General Assembly in Act 104. That legislation directed us to promulgate regulations that set forth a model MOU between school entities and law enforcement, local law enforcement, establish protocols for notifying police when certain offenses occur on school property, establish protocols for emergency and non-emergency response by the police, and establish procedures and protocols for the response and handling of students with disabilities. The regulations and the model MOU were developed through an inclusive process, which included representatives of school districts, law enforcement, district attorneys, juvenile court judges, juvenile probation officers, and advocates for students with disabilities. School districts can elect to use our model MOU to fulfill their legal obligation to execute an agreement with their local police that governs their relationship in the reporting and resolution of incidents. The model MOU addresses legal parameters for disclosure of student records, procedures used by law enforcement in responding to incidents, how schools assist law enforcement in handling an incident, and cooperation in verifying data reported in annual school safety reports. The MOU also spells out incidents that require immediate notification to law enforcement and incidents over which school administrators have discretion in reporting to the police. The incidents that fall into each of these categories are established in statute, not by the board. The section of the MOU that addresses notification to law enforcement also suggests that law enforcement may consult with school administrators in determining whether to file charges, invites discussion about whether a diversionary program may be an appropriate alternative to address a student's behavior, identifies factors a school administrator should consider in determining whether to contact police regarding incidents where the administrator has discretion, and outlines notification procedures for incidents involving students with disabilities. Our committee received a report this morning from Scott Curran, the new director of the department's Office for Safe Schools, to better understand how school entities are using the current MOU. To prepare for our meeting today, Mr. Curran reviewed the MOUs that school entities are required to file with his office every two years. He provided an update to the data to reflect in his written report and noted that 99.9% of school entities in Pennsylvania have MOUs on file with the department. There's only one charter school that's not filed a timely MOU. Mr. Curran provided content that the outstanding, context that the outstanding charter had moved recently, they moved their facilities, and they have said that they're working on bringing that school into compliance. Mr. Curran also shared that our model MOU is widely used in the field and noted that his office did not identify any MOUs on file that substantively diverge from our model. Moving forward, Mr. Curran said that the Safe Schools Office will consider setting a filing deadline for all MOUs in the same year to streamline the department's monitoring process, and he said he's also considering creating a fillable form for the model MOUs to streamline the process for the school entities. So at this time, our committee agreed unanimously this morning that we are not recommending that the board make any revisions to the model MOU, and I don't think it requires any action by the board because it's merely maintaining the status quo on what has proven to be over the course of now what will be three different review periods, evidence of effectiveness of the MOU as it stands. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, any questions or comments for Dr. Perry? Okay, thank you for your report. At this time, I'd like to recognize Noe Ortega for his inaugural report as Acting Secretary of Education. Welcome, Mr. Ortega.
Madam Chair, it's an absolute pleasure to be able to join the group today in this new capacity, and I'm really honored to continue to serve alongside these folks. I want to use my report today to do a couple of things, if that's okay, which will be brief. First, to offer thanks, a few acknowledgements, some encouragement, and then as well of an introduction of the new deputy for the Office of Post-Secondary and Higher Education. I think it's important to always acknowledge and to provide a thank you to all the leaders, stakeholders who are out there doing really difficult work, doing really difficult times. We've done a number of things to work carefully to be able to navigate the circumstances surrounding COVID-19 and the pandemic, and it's been a tremendous challenge, one that certainly has been taxing on a number of leaders, many of you who are joining us here today, and I think it's important that we can... And I think it's important that we continue to work as a department to ensure that the conditions are in place, to allow leaders to continue to be effective in what they're trying to do. I don't envy the circumstances that anyone is in, and I really want to continue, folks, to navigate this in the best interest of the health and safety of the students, families, and communities they serve. And I think it's important to begin with that. I also want to take a few moments to acknowledge just a number of challenging circumstances that sort of have played out recently, and thank our institutions of higher education, our education sectors, our libraries, and other stakeholders, who have really stepped up to provide folks an opportunity to engage sort of in deliberative discourse around challenging circumstances that many of us have faced recently. It's important that every time we talk about education in general, particularly educational attainment, that we think about the civic, public good outcomes that are associated with educational attainment. I bring that up now, because never has our society really needed spaces where healing can begin, but also sort of collaborative thinking around ways that we could navigate the circumstances that we've been held. And I really have a great deal of faith in our educational sectors and our system to continue to provide students with those opportunities for staff, faculty, teachers, and other educators to engage in those discussions, and more importantly, continue to advocate for the importance of why educational attainment plays such a central goal in ensuring that our society navigates this and shows the kind of resiliency that it's capable of showing in the months ahead of us. And so I just want to make sure that that's not lost in the narrative, and I will continue to encourage our team and our stakeholders to continue to understand the role that they play in that particular area. And so I want to encourage all folks, as you think through, to really, really anchor a lot of the thinking that we do around education in that area. It is with that mindset that I'm also really pleased to welcome a new member for our team, Dr. Tanya Garcia, who many of you heard her chime in earlier, just has an extensive resume of things that make her the right fit for the work that we need to do now. She joins us, and we were able to convince her to leave her role at Georgetown University for the Center for Education and Workforce to join our team here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And glad, I'm really glad when she accepted. She has extensive experience in higher education. She's worked for the State Higher Education Executive Officers Group in Colorado. She spent some time with the Lumina Foundation, working to help states build post-secondary educational attainment goals and accomplish them. So she's done a lot of work in that particular space. And she's worked in Departments of Education in New Mexico and provided as a contractor services and insights to a number of other education departments, including some work in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania with systems and other institutional leaders. So this area is not that far removed from her. And if anything, she's already proven to really have an understanding of the intersection between workforce and career pathways for young students. And so I'm really pleased, Madam Chair, members of the board, to really welcome somebody onto this team who I feel very highly that can continue the work that we've been working to do for a number of years while I've been here, and then even before I arrived here, the work that Matt, Secretary Rivera, Lee Burket, and a number of other folks from the PDE team have been able to do. I have tremendous faith that she will serve the group in the way that we've all tried to serve you repeatedly, and will certainly be a resource. And if you don't mind, Madam Chair, if I can just give her a yield a few minutes of the time for her to share any words that she might with the group?
Certainly.
Sure. Dr. Garcia, please. The floor is yours.
Secretary Ortega, thank you so much for that humbling welcome, Madam Chair and members of the board. It is absolutely thrilling and, you know, just an honor to be back in state government and in advancing the great work that Secretary Ortega has already, you know, had the had the chance to mold and shape. I am more than delighted to work really hard to break down the silos that prevent our young people and older adults engage or reengage in our educational workforce systems. And I will certainly work tirelessly to build on the great work that all of the various sectors have already engaged in. I will, you know, bring my knowledge and experience to bear to improve and expand educational and economic opportunities for all within the Commonwealth. And I, you know, humbly offer any expertise that will help this state advance its educational goals. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia.
Welcome, welcome, and we look forward to meeting you in person.
Yes, and I can't wait till we're back into the in-person sort of engagement that we've really enjoyed. You know, Dr. Garcia comes to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania at a time where we're continuing to see sort of resurgence happen around the pandemic. And so no doubt does she have her work cut out for her, but we are certainly going to continue to collaborate in ways that we've all become accustomed to. And I just wanted to take a few moments in the report today to really introduce her to the team at large. Madam Chair, that concludes my report today, short and brief, to give folks back some time. And so I thank you again for for this renewed kind of partnership that we'll have moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Ortega?
Just one quick question. Oh, I apologize.
Go ahead, I can wait.
I was just curious if there have been any updates at all regarding the state assessment requirements and so forth in light of the increased restrictions and so forth that have been released here within the last couple of days. And Deputy Secretary STEM had sent out an update and said those were still on track to be carried out due to the federal requirements. I just wondered if there had been any progress on that at all, potentially, you know, allowing some leniency or delaying those perhaps for another year?
Sure, just the conversations continue around the assessments, but to now, nothing has changed from the release that was provided the other day. I would be remiss if I didn't say that things are probably going to begin to change as the administrations begin to transpire. And so we expect as well some movement at the federal level. We continue to reconcile that, to make sure that we could provide sort of the best circumstances for for the K-12 system. So as of now, nothing has changed from the previous announcement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
This is Jim Barker. How are you?
Hey, Jim.
Everybody in COVID land? I just want to say that the sentiment of public opinion is unified in the selection of Dr. Ortega as the Secretary of Education. It's a very, very positive, powerful move that will continue the high-quality learning and hopefully educational development for all of the Commonwealth students. And we welcome Dr. Garcia. And I'm sure that the two of you will continue the good work along with Matt. And our hope is that Commonwealth will continue to be the place to raise all children and also to educate all children regardless of any factor except motivation. So welcome aboard, and we're glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other questions? Okay. Yeah, Maureen?
I just said, you're here, I think, on behalf of everyone. So we echo Jim's comments, Noe, and been privileged to work with you for a number of years in your past capacity, and only have good, good hopes and best wishes and commitment to a great supportive of your activities as you move forward. And the same to you, Tanya. Dr. Garcia, welcome. It's a great place to be working, believe me. So we're really thrilled to have you. Thank you.
No doubt. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Maureen Green.
Okay, anyone else?
Tanya, just keep keep an eye to on Dr. Barker.
That's because, you know, I know that's a Faberge egg you have in the back. It's probably worth more than my house.
Welcome to both you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Secretary Ortega. And again, welcome, Dr. Garcia. Our regulations in Chapter 14 and 16 require that the department make an annual reports to the board on due process hearings related to special education and gifted education, as well as outcomes of gifted education compliance monitoring. I'd like to recognize Carol Clancy, Special Education Bureau Director, who will deliver these reports on behalf of the department. So Carol, we're ready for your report.
Very much, Madam Chair and members of the board. I really appreciate being here today to present this annual information. The reports have been provided for you to review. Do I need to share them on the screen, or are they provided for the board to look at?
Carol, we have provided those to members of the board, but if you're able to share them on the screen, that would be beneficial for the members of the public that are joining us today.
Absolutely. So annually, we need to provide reports to the board regarding the number of due process complaints in gifted and special education throughout the year. So just let me make sure you can see my screens. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, so this is what the typical annual report looks like. So within the area of special education, last school year, there were a total of 977 requests for due process. Majority of the due process requests don't go through to decision-making. There were 658 settlements, 83 that were withdrawn, 26 that were dismissed. At the time of this report, there were 170 that carried over from last year to this year, and 40 resulted in decisions. Of the decisions, 17 ruled in favor of the LEA, 11 ruled in favor of the parent, 12 were split between the parent and the LEA. Of the issues that are brought for due process, the top three issues are seeking compensatory education, implementation of the IEP, or timeliness of the initial evaluations. The next report that I will show you, I'll go over briefly, is the gifted report. Shirley Moyer, the gifted advisor for PDE, has joined us today. She's created a presentation for the State Board to go over not only the due process results for gifted, but also to update the board on the State Board recommendations of March 2019 to let the board know where we are in progress of your recommendations and where we intend to go in the future. But this report shows that there are a decreasing trend in gifted due processes over the past couple of years. There were five requests last year, one settlement, one decision, and three withdrawn. So at this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Moyer, who has pre-recorded an update regarding the State Board gifted recommendations. And Karen, are you guys teed to run that? We sent that in to Stephanie?
Yes, Stephanie, you have Shirley's presentation, correct?
All right, I was on mute. Yes.
Okay. We're ready to play that. Thank you. Stephanie, you can play the presentation.
I'm sorry, one second.
While that gets teed up, are there any questions regarding special education due process requests?
This is Dr. Bracy Green. I just wanted to process again. There are over 900 requests last year for due for due process, the bulk of which were resolved, 678 were settled. Out of that, that 678 number, were the majority of those for IEPs? What was the, I saw that you had some was it compulsory education or compensatory education? But I'm just curious about, because there are only five requests for gifted, specifically for gifted, the vast majority, in my mind, counterintuitively says that the rest are for IEPs. Is that correct?
So the, they, there are two separate reports. Yes, there were very few due process requests for gifted. There tends to be a much larger amount of requests for students that have IEPs, those that are eligible under IDEA. And the three top complaints that go to, that went to due process were resulting from the implementation of the IEP, parents feeling that the IP was not implemented as written, the request for compensatory education, which means the parents were asking for additional services because they did not feel that the IEP met the needs of their child, or that the evaluation was not timely or thorough, excuse me. So when they were going through the evaluation process to determine if their child was eligible for services, the parents did not feel that the report accurately reflected the needs of their child.
And the, just for clarification for everyone else who's listening, the process of requesting support, we are not responsible for the private schools that have their own gifted, et cetera, et cetera. I receive a number of questions from parents about, well, can can the State Board do anything about the fact that I need something at a private school or a religious school or something like that? And I said, no, we only handle the public school sector. So I just wanted to clarify that for anyone who might be listening.
Yes. That's accurate. Okay, Stephanie, I think I saw you share your screen. Are you ready now?
I am. I apologize. I keep forgetting to unmute myself. Yes. And this.
The sound is not good. When you share your screen, could you click the button? Could you unshare? And then before you share, there's a button at the bottom of the screen to click for the audio.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry.
Do you see the button?
I apologize. I do not.
Okay, if you would just share, and then Shirley, if you want to come on mic and just talk through the slides, please.
I don't know how to turn the sound off, then.
Just if you just share and mute, then Shirley can talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Shirley, are you there? I don't know where she went. Okay, I will talk. So this is just an example that I just went over regarding the due process request, the information I just went over. So if you remember back in 2019, the State Board listed an array of recommendations that they wanted the gifted initiative across the state to implement. So when the slides advance, it will start going over what has happened in Pennsylvania. There has been a significant increase in attention to gifted services across Pennsylvania this year, and we've had some very positive results that I would like to get to if we could get through the presentation. Carol, do you want me to, I'm sorry, I got lost. Do you want me to run through this? Yes, please. Okay, all right. So gifted complaint summary that we had in 2019, 2020, there were 10 complaints, six were resolved, four were still open, but they have closed in November of this year. The complaint issues were mediation agreement violations, preav.
The complaint issues were mediation agreement violations, pre-evaluation violations, prior written notice violations, timeline violations, and I lost the screen.
You keep talking, Shirley, I'll get the presentation up.
Okay. I have to find it. Hold on, I apologize for this. Okay, there it is. So the recommendations to the, from the roundtable, we'll move right from there. I think you saw the, the information on the due process complaints and requests have been significantly lowered, I believe it's the communication that we're, we're putting out there. The roundtable recommendations were to hire a professional development technical assistance specialist to define acceleration and enrichment, to encourage the use of a single evaluation for dual exceptionalities, to provide guidance on differentiating GIEP requirements at the three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and to update the website in a timely manner. Next slide. We hired two contracted state gifted liaisons, Amy Davis, who is attending today, and Patrice Semtech. Amy comes from the Western Region, from Allegheny IU3, and Patrice comes from Montgomery County IU23. We believed at the time that the best thing for us to do was to get a vision of what is going on throughout the whole Commonwealth as opposed to one single area. So the two halftime contracts are working very well in providing the information that needs to go out to our constituents. For acceleration enrichment, oh, I'm sorry, the, the overall accomplishments that we've made to this point at this year, since November, when the two, when Amy started and Patrice started in February, we have held over 20 trainings for parents, teachers, administrators, attorneys, and advocates. We've had audiences that ranged in size from 12 to 275. We began publishing a quarterly newsletter. The first one had 1,100 viewers, the second one has close to 1,300. We've revised the entire PDE SAS learning community. We have over 2,700 followers. It was 2,400 when I made this slide. We did a survey among administrators and professionals in the field to see what needs are out there from our teachers, our administrators, people who are working with gifted children, and we had 600.
Oh my goodness, this is the world of Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I will keep talking. So there were over 600 responses from all 29 intermediate units represented. It was a really strong return on that survey. They are, they are having bi-weekly, I mean, bi-monthly meetings with all the liaisons in the field, and that has been received extremely well from the gifted service providers. They feel very supported by the work that is happening across the Commonwealth right now. There was, there was a BEC that was provided to the state, which clarified dual exceptionalities across, when students are gifted, but they also have a disability category under IDEA. So there was a clarity for the field regarding how that should be managed within the school system. And could you go down one more slide, Stephanie, please? So future plans moving forward in gifted, we are looking to gather information and create trainings on the best models for research-based service delivery within the school systems. They're looking to form a committee to develop action plans to share differentiation service models at the elementary and the secondary levels. They are working on creating a PILLS course, and PILLS is the training that Pennsylvania does for their principals. So they are looking to develop a course to train principals on implementing effective gifted services within a school, school system. They are, the team is going to research federal level grants in hopes to secure some additional funding to support LEAs within Pennsylvania to enhance how they are able to provide gifted supports. And they are working in collaboration with Millersville to unpack virtual remote challenges for gifted and gifted students, teachers, and parents during this particular time. Next slide. Boy, it would have been easier if we just spoke about it and didn't try to use all the technology. Our point on coming to you today, you can stop sharing now, Stephanie, is that we wanted just to assure the board that you had a committee that came together, you made some recommendations to PDE, and they were followed through with, and they are having a very positive impact in the field right now. The liaisons that are providing services, those that are receiving the trainings have been very grateful and appreciative, and the communication and the collaboration that is happening among the districts in sharing best practices has also been very strong. So we just wanted to report back to the board that we are following through with your recommendations and where we intend to move forward. And we are, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Carol, this is Jamie Bracy Green. I have two quick questions for you. In determining, from a clinical standpoint, if we're talking about putting together an evidence-based approach to determining giftedness. Is there some recommendation or some standard that your bureau is using in terms of using intelligence testing, the WISC versus the KABC? Is there some preference? So that's the first question. Is Pennsylvania siding with one type of clinical diagnostic or the other? For, for my colleagues on the board, the KABC is more likely to pick up determinations of giftedness in a school district like Allentown, which is 70% Hispanic, right? And so the WISC has traditionally not been able to, to make those determinations as well. So I'm just, I'm hoping that we're able to use both of those and that our, and this is my second question. Amy and Patrice, are they school psychologists by training? The liaisons for the East and the West, or?
No, they are not school psychologists. Shirley can speak to their credentials, and I can speak to the other part of your conversation. Sure.
So from a clinical standpoint, I'm, I'm, I don't know, I don't need to know their credentials if they're not school psychologists. The point that I'm raising is that it's school psychologists who are able to make the determinations of giftedness. So if we have liaisons that are covering the Commonwealth, looking for more than five opportunities to identify where that talent may be in the Commonwealth, it may be good to supplement them with school psychologist graduate students, someone to help them support the organizing they may be doing across the Commonwealth. I just, in my own clinical studies, I became very, very aware of the need to supplement the capacity to determine giftedness across this, across any region. So those are my two questions. What diagnostic tools are we using? And second, what, what infrastructure do we?
Sure. I can answer what we're using. In Pennsylvania, these are local decisions. So each district is using, we don't, we don't, under Chapter 16, have any expectation of what tool that they are using. We have an expectation that it does the job it's supposed to do, but we don't tell them which tools to use. So all 500 districts could have different IQ tests that they use. Most of them have a small array so that they are able to utilize what's best for the student that is being assessed. And we just have had this conversation, actually in a meeting earlier today, because we feel that our gifted written reports need to be more consistent in what the reports are providing for the GIEP teams so that they can actually write solid, good goals that can lead to a better, improved education for students who are identified.
I, I will share, and I'm just going to gently push back a little bit, Dr. Moyer or Ms. Moyer, with 500 school districts, and we, we absolutely understand education is local, but at the Commonwealth level, there should be, my expectation would be, and this is just, you know, my, I'm an educational psychologist, so I'm quite clear about what's at stake here. What I am concerned about is that we have no set of evidence-based recommendations that we're putting forward. We may not be dictating what people are using, but there are clear evidentiary research studies that have been done to talk about what are some of the preeminent ways of determining giftedness. And this is particularly true in terms of allocating the resources to support those families, those communities, et cetera, who right now may not be getting the benefit of that kind of support. So again, the diagnostic tools that the Commonwealth is using, there's plenty of evidence and plenty of outstanding educational experts in this, in this state who can identify for very, very good reasons why we're using a WISC, why we're using a KABC. And it could be that the cost of the reason that the districts are not using either of those. And in some cases, in some other states, they are passing that cost on to parents who right now, at home teaching their children, all believe, all, they all believe their kids are gifted.
Yeah.
These are kids are special.
Point well taken. Yes, we have the, we have the same in the state. I've been on board since October of 2018. So I, I think there are valid points that you made, and that gives me information to take back to the team, you know, to start looking at that. But we, we have discussed starting with some sort of a training that is geared towards our school psychs so that we, we are making sure that we're not just doing professional development for teachers.
Right.
There's a lot of other components that need to be addressed, but basically, funding is a huge barrier at this point.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to recommend, and I'm doing so publicly, she would probably hit me, Kathy Fiorello is probably one of the greatest producers of school psychologists in the Commonwealth. She's at Temple University, and she has trained experts all over the country. I would suggest that your office perhaps approach her just for a conversation, because Kathy is very, very amenable to making sure that equity and access across the board. There may be students who are misdiagnosed. I don't think that that's really the case. I really think it's an opportunity for us to gather more students. There may be students, and I'm looking at Aggris here, there may be students in CTE who are in CTE because, you know, they, that's where their brilliance is showing. And it could be that there are additional resources for students in different educational arenas who could get those resources if they had this designation. So if the Commonwealth is going to compete against the rest of the region for talent, it behooves us to identify where that talent is and cultivate that talent wherever it is, and use the right diagnostic tools to get there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Say something, Mrs. Maureen. I had the privilege of chairing the committee that dealt with this matter, with the gifted students and special ed students, particularly with regard to the gifted, a lot of our recommendations dealt with the gifted arena. And I just want to take a moment to recognize Dr. Clancy. She came into this job about the time that our committee was issuing its recommendations. And I, I think I'm right about that, or maybe just shortly before that. And I'm correct? And in the short time from our report to now, I just think there's been tremendous, remarkable movement on, of an issue that just went to, to our hearts as we listen to the feedback throughout the state. And I, you know, I know you've got more to do, but I just think that you and your team have done a remarkable job of addressing some of the concerns echoed in that report. So on behalf of the entire commission, thank you very, board, thank you very much.
Thank you so, so much. I really have to turn that appreciation over to Shirley and Amy and Patrice. They are this, this force that has really embraced this with a lot of passion and, and really give a lot of credit to the board for recognizing a need because it has been received so well across the Commonwealth. It's like it has really helped to fill an ache, and the field is just so appreciative. So I thank you for the recognition. It has been a very busy year, but the majority of the work has been done by Ms. Moyer, Patrice, and Amy, but thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Mrs. Clancy. So I was just wondering, looking at the numbers, is the number of due process requests for special education consistent with past years? Or is it higher or lower? And then the second part of that question is, are these complaints mostly against the schools in particular, or against the Department of Education as a whole?
Okay. So the complaints that I've reported on this year were, were lower than previous years. We've had a gradual trend upward over the past five years, but last year was quite a bit lower, but we do attribute that to COVID. In return, the complaints we're receiving right now are significantly decreased than, like, we're running a month-to-month comparison over the years, so we are trending lower than we have in previous years. But again, we are, we are attributing COVID to a part of that, and we will, we're in a kind of wait and see. Prior to this year, we were seeing a gradually, gradual increase every year. All of the due process numbers that I just described were all between families and, and school districts. They didn't, they did not represent state complaints.
Okay, thank you.
This is Maureen again. I have another question for you, Dr. Clancy, now a question. I know that recently there was some discussion at the state level that went out to the schools about COVID-19 compensatory services. Do you want to maybe share with us a little bit about that outreach and what its goal is?
Sure. So USDE, OSEP, the federal office that mandates states to implement IDEA, sent guidance out very early during the COVID pandemic, indicating that all students with disabilities would need to be reviewed to see if they would qualify for compensatory services based on the COVID-19 experience. What that means is that if a local education agency is unable to implement the IEP as written, then the student might be entitled to additional services to make up for the inability to implement the IEP. Prior to COVID, the concept of compensatory education was related to when a district was flawed in their effort. They, they, they were at fault for what happened. We are now in a COVID pandemic, and the challenges that we are having trying to pivot from full remote, full in-person services to remote services is causing some, some barriers to implementing the IEPs as they were written. Districts are working very hard to work with families, to adjust services appropriately, but there could be situations where students have a great difficulty accessing services in the same manner. It's in, at that point that the state is recommending, when the time is appropriate, that they be, the students be evaluated to see if they are in need of additional services. The way that need would be determined is they would look at where the student's skills were in March and do a baseline assessment, and then do a period of reteaching of skills, and then do a remeasurement, very similar to the extended school year eligibility process. If students with disabilities have evidence that they have lost skills, or they did not make adequate progress or meaningful progress based on the pandemic, then the IEP team should come together with what a plan should be to help remedy the situation, to help support the student, to make the right, the appropriate, meaningful progress. And that can be implemented when the time is right. Let's all hope that the time is right, is possibly next summer. We were hoping it would be sooner than that. But the whole goal is to try to support our students with disabilities who are more vulnerable, not to be as negatively impacted by the pandemic, by also supporting families who are very anxious right now when they know their children are struggling, but to let them know that we are going to work through, through this with you, we're going to work with your children when the time is right, to ensure that they are making the progress that they should. Does that help? Okay.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a question for Ms. Clancy.
I have a question for Ms. Clancy. My question is, I mean, related to what you are just talking about, about the special new children. Like many parents who do not have background in special ed education, right? And as the schools are closed and it's very difficult for them to teach their children or take care of children while they are working outside or they have many more children, like, so what are we doing for them? Because I have received a couple of few questions, and if you don't mind, I would like to read code to code. Is that okay?
I could not hear the last, what do you want to do?
I did receive few questions from my community members. Would that be okay if I read code to code, their comments and their questions?
I would leave that up to the board procedures. I don't know.
I don't know if that's appropriate at this time. Karen is, would, would that be more under public comment or?
Yes, it's more like a public comment, but it's related to the question that I just asked, like, what are we doing for them as many of, many, most of the parents does not have any background in special education.
So let me, I, I think I can answer that and maybe I can answer the other questions that you have just indirectly. So I mean, is it okay if I share my screen one second?
Sure, thank you so much.
Okay, so so our Pennsylvania training and technical assistance, can you see my screen? Okay, so the patent network has been a significant support to the field during this time. And if you go to their website, we have created an array of support services for educators, for families and for students with disabilities during this time. So parents can go on to this website and there are resources that they can use in their home. That's one piece of the support that's available. We have also provided live coaching support for parents. So they can go into the website and sign up under particular initiatives such as autism, behavior or dyslexia and set up for phone conferences where we have live consultants that they would be able to schedule a time with that they can project virtually into their homes, so live office hours. So that's another support that families have during this time because we know it's been a struggle for, for everyone, particularly families who, who are not special educators. And the third support that we are doing is we are offering parent conferences. We so far have had two parent conferences directed, targeted specifically to the needs of families during this time. How to work with their families, where certain resources are in their communities, how to access certain learning platforms that parents are struggling with, or how certain behavioral protocols or systems or services you can set up in your home to try to create a more, a, a learning environment that's more conducive. If you have families that are struggling and they're looking for support, I'll just articulate what the supports have been within the Commonwealth that they can access. They, we have an RA email account. We get about 10 a day. Our advisors reach out to those families and try to respond to their questions. And if it's a matter of building a bridge between the district to the families to communicate, we're building bridges and we're, we're communicating and supporting the entities to come together on whatever their confusion is. There are advocates. We have a strong partnership with the, with the state's parent training network, PEO. I meet with them monthly, if not bimonthly, and between PEO, the ARC, HUNAY. We discuss what the concerns are. They let us know what the parent concerns are. We are, we let them know what the supports are. So we can try to support our families to the best way possible. And then there are the traditional complaint processes that families can pursue if they, if they don't feel like their voices are being heard. But we are trying to be as preventative, collaborative and compassionate as possible during this time. Does that help at all?
Okay, you know, for time's sake, I'd like to move on. It seems like Carol is only responsible for special ed. It seems like some of your questions may be more appropriate to go to Secretary Ortega. So I ask that you submit in writing your questions and we'll address it because I'd like to move on. Okay. All right. Thank you, Carol, for your report. It's been very helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next, I'd like to recognize Elizabeth McLeod, Vice President of State Grant and Special Ed Programs at FIA. Ms. McLeod is joining us to deliver FIA's annual report to the board on Act 101 programs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me appropriately?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thank you for having me here to speak with you today. The Pennsylvania General Assembly created the Higher Education of the Disadvantaged Program, which is more commonly known as the Act 101 Program, following passage of the Higher Education Equal Opportunity Act back in 1971. And the Act 101 Program was created to enhance the educational opportunities of academically and financially underserved students in the Commonwealth. The program allocates funds directly to post-secondary schools to provide support services for students who are at risk financially and educationally so that they can successfully complete their post-secondary study. The program was administered by PDE from its inception until June of 2011, at which point the fiscal code enacted by the General Assembly transferred the program from PDE to the Pennsylvania Higher Education Assistance Agency, or FIA. For this year that we're reporting on, the 2019-20 academic year, the Act 101 Program received an appropriation of $2.358 million. And I'd like to point out that that included a 5% increase in funding from the prior year, which was the first increase in funding that the Act 101 Program had received since administration of it had been moved over to FIA back in 2011. When we look at students who are eligible to receive services under the Act 101 Program, students are recognized as being academically at risk if they have a predicted grade point average or GPA of 2.0 or less on a 4.0 scale. And they're considered to be economically at risk if the students have an annual family income that is equal to or less than 200% of the federal poverty income guidelines that are established by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. When we looked at that federal poverty income guideline for the 2019-20 academic year, we were actually looking at family incomes from 2017 because families 2017 income is what students reported when they applied for financial aid through the free application for federal student aid that uses what's called prior, prior year income. And so it was 2017 information. And for 2017, the federal poverty guideline for a family of four was $24,600. So when we reviewed students who received services in the Act 101 Program, the median family income for the students was $21,015. And that is significantly less than Pennsylvania's median family income in the same year of $75,949. Nearly one-fourth of the Act 101 students came from households that participate in at least one of the following federal means-tested benefit programs, SNAP, the National School Lunch Program, Medicaid, SSI, TANF or WIC. Students participating in Act 101 must also be Pennsylvania residents and be enrolled in a program that's leading to an undergraduate credential. And students can be enrolled either full-time or part-time within the program. Eligible institutions in Pennsylvania include those willing to offer a developmental program that incorporates the service and reporting requirements of the Act 101 Program. And the institution has to be supporting at least 40 students a year to participate in this program. Schools do provide different services to their Act 101 students, but there are a few core services that are offered at every participating school to enhance the opportunity for their student success. And those services include counseling, tutoring, student orientation programming and academic guidance to the participants. And then most schools also use their allocations to help fund staff members who support the school's program. Some of the award funds support things like lending libraries for Act 101 students, including electronic materials, which has been important for students over the past year. Schools can use their Act 101 funds for student educational travel, for campus events and for participation in cultural enrichment opportunities as well. Other services, services offered include peer mentorship programs, honor societies and career and academic exploration workshops. Within your meeting materials today, you should have a copy, an electronic copy of the 2019-20 Act 101 Annual Report. And it provides outcomes data on the Act 101 Program utilizing data that has been provided by all of the 33 participating institutions that participated in 1920. That data came to FIA and we compiled the report. And you'll see that overall, the Act 101 Program served 3,673 students in 2019-20, which was a slight increase from the 3,606 students served the prior year. And when you look through the report, you'll see highlights around things such as Act 101 students earning a higher cumulative GPA in developmental courses compared to students not participating in Act 101 at their schools who were taking developmental courses. You can see how the Act 101 services support these students in their percentage of college-level course completion rates and their first-year retention rate from fall of 2018 to fall of 2019. So as always at FIA, as we're compiling this data, it's gratifying to observe the positive impact that the Act 101 Program provides to students who rely on these services for their educational success. And I'm happy, as always, to share this report with you and to answer any questions that you have regarding the program. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. McLeod? Okay, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Our last scheduled report is an update from the Professional Standards and Practices Commission and the Office of Chief Counsel. Mr. Crosby and Ms. DiRito, we are ready for your report.
Hey, thank you. And I'll just start and I'll, I'll keep my comments brief. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions when Attorney DiRito has, has concluded her remarks. The, the PSBC will be meeting on November 23 via Zoom. At that time, we will hear 33 discipline cases and one petition for reinstatement. We'll also be discussing our, some proposed revisions to the Code of Professional Practice and Conduct for educators. As you may know, we are in the process of revising the code for the first time since it was adopted in 1992. So we published the proposed regulation on April 20 of 2019. And now we're just making some additional revisions based on some comments we received during the public comment period. But really, the goal is to modernize the code, to make it more relevant for current educators and to adopt standards related to technology and particularly electronic communications with students as well as appropriate boundaries. Also, as you know, the commission reports annually on its public adjudications. Typically, the, we, annual report in April, March or April, unfortunately, it was delayed this year due to the, to the pandemic. But you do have a copy of our 2019 annual report, which does, on pages seven through 36, it lists all of our public adjudications for 2019. As you'll see, we issued a total of 214 public adjudications. 129 of those involved educators who were convicted of crimes set forth in Section 111 of the School Code or crimes involving moral perpetuity. So those are our automatic revocation cases. 70 of those involved educators who were disciplined on non-criminal grounds. So things like immorality, negligence and temperance. Three of those involved founded reports of child abuse. Nine involved educators who were disciplined by other jurisdictions. And we also had three petitions for reinstatement, one of which was granted and, and two of which were denied. That's just sort of a quick snapshot of the report. Again, if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them when Attorney DiRito has concluded her, her remarks. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the state board. As indicated in our report, we will be presenting matters to the commission on Monday. Thirty-four matters will be presented to the commission seeking the imposition of professional discipline. Our office will also participate in the conversation and has been participating in the conversation involving changes to the code. With respect to current pending disciplinary data, there are 2013 open educator misconduct complaints pending with our office. Of those, they impact 1,746 individual educators. So some of the educators have more than one complaint pending against them, which can happen depending upon the manner in which complaints come to our office and depending upon the manner in which pre-complaint material is also reviewed and complaints are initiated by our office. I provided some information within the report to provide perspective as to the percentage of actual educators who are the subject of complaints. We have jurisdiction, we, meaning the Office of Chief Counsel within the department and the Professional Standards and Practices Commission, have jurisdiction over more than 850,000 educators, which is an incredibly large number, particularly when compared to the other professions. And really, when you look at the information that we receive, which is a very large amount of criminal justice information and other relevant information in pre-complaint form relative to those particular educators. It is less than one-quarter of a percent of that total amount of educators over whom we have jurisdiction who are actually the subject of an educator misconduct complaint. So it really is a very small percentage, which is great. I also note in the report that of the 2013 complaints pending, about 18% or 357, up, 350, 357 of the total number are identified as high priority complaints because of the nature of the allegations. Complaints are identified as high priority when they do come into our office, so that can change over time. It, sometimes we have complaints that come in and because the allegations involve serious misconduct on the part of the educator, including sexual misconduct, sexual abuse or exploitation, allegations of physical injury to a child or where the educator faces criminal charges that are of the type where we would be considering to immediately suspend the teaching certificate because the educator poses a threat. That designation can change over time. So it may be that we investigate the allegations and find that there is no evidence to support a rumor perhaps that an educator has engaged in sexual misconduct. At that point in time, we would lift that high priority flag and the, the matter would not be characterized as a high priority complaint any longer. The converse is also true whereby perhaps that complaint would come to us alleging the educator engaged in some angry outbursts in the classroom. Upon investigating the complaint, we may discover that there are allegations that the educator was also having an inappropriate romantic relationship with a student. And at that point, we would identify the complaint as being high priority. And that just means that those are the complaints that we tend to advance for investigation. We try to move those along as quickly as possible because of course, they indicate that there is a potential safety risk to students, given the nature of the allegations. So far this year, not, which, we have, we have only received 303 complaints and this is an unusual year for us. I've heard some other folks today talk about receiving maybe less complaints in different environments. I think it was related to special education and perhaps being related to the pandemic. But we have received only 303 complaints this year. We have resolved 603 complaints. I also note in the report our technological updates and improvements. And we've talked about this in the past, where in the context of PDE's initiative to advance our technology across the board as a state educational agency, we too, within the Office of Chief Counsel and relative to the educator discipline process, have been working very closely with the Office of Administration's IT team to revise the tracking system that we currently use to track pre-complaint material and also outstanding educator misconduct complaints. This project was slated to have concluded over a year ago, but unfortunately, for a variety of reasons outside of our control, that project has not concluded. But we anticipate that it will be concluded, if not by the end of this year, then early next year in 2021. Our hope is that this database will allow us to extrapolate data in a more efficient manner. Will be a much more reliable system because the server will be more reliable and serviced, supported by IT. And we're also working with Pennsylvania Interactive, a contractor through the governor's office, to create electronic forms for the filing of educator misconduct complaints and mandatory reports. And not only to allow for the use of electronic complaint forms and mandatory report forms, but so that the information then goes directly into our database, eliminating staff time that is required currently to input that information. So we're hoping that that also comes to fruition. That's part of our project that we've also been working on for quite some time and have spent quite a bit of time and effort in trying to get all of the parties working together and making sure that the things are moving along smoothly the way that they should. I just also wanted to mention, respective to the report, that we currently do have electronic forms available on the PDE website. They're not the type of forms that we will have eventually through Pennsylvania Interactive, but they do allow customers, clients, to submit an educator misconduct complaint or educators, chief school administrators, to submit mandatory reports to our office using the electronic format. And we do receive quite a few in this manner, so that's great. And I think that's about it with respect to the report for today. You should have received, I believe, on October 22, information from Karen Moltano that our office prepared to provide a comprehensive description of the manner in which our office evaluates educator misconduct complaints and also a detailed description of how we manage the significant amount of pre-complaint material that our office also receives when determining whether to file a complaint as an interested party. And I think that's about it for now, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Crosby or Ms. DiRito?
This is Ron Perry, Madam Chair, if I could be recognized.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you both very much for your reports and for sharing the document on October 22. I did have a follow-up question about the October 22 document. It basically sets forth to lay out how cases will be either dismissed or null and prost or noncharged, whatever those may be. I'll sort of collectively call that dismissing. And the way I read it is that it gives two examples of situations where you might intend to dismiss. One is a first DUI kind of a case, and the other is a misdemeanor retail theft kind of a case. It's helpful to have the laundry list of what you sort of have to charge for, but that doesn't really tell us what offenses lie within your discretion that you've been historically charging for. And to that end, which among those discretionary charge-type offenses you're no longer charging for or dismissing. All we really got was a first DUI and a retail theft misdemeanor situation. So I suspect that there are more offenses that are being dismissed or noncharged. And I think it would be helpful if we were able to understand what those are.
And to be honest with you, I don't believe that that's the case, at least across the board. I don't believe that there are categories that we will not be initiating complaints on that fall outside of those two discrete examples. The one thing I did want to clarify for the board, as embarrassing as it is and relative to the need for improved technology, while we've been teleworking, our entire staff of 13, actually 14, we do receive the support of an additional person who is outside of our group. We've been able to continue teleworking, but we've been trying to access our database, which is like our lifeline, really, to all of the work that we do. We generate letters from our database. We keep notes of all of our interactions in our investigations with school districts, with solicitors. Everything really is contained within our database. And because of various interruptions with the use of VPN, with various updates that would occur over time that we were not aware of, we had significant connectivity problems for many, many months. And it was only until probably about six weeks ago that we've had the capacity to remote-in, to use desktops within the physical building at 333 Market Street to access our database there, which has really made a world of difference. So while we were struggling with this, all of the connectivity issues, where the database was taking a significant amount of time to provide any information and just really posing a significant challenge to all of us, I was preparing for the last State Board report. And typically, when I would run a data query, I would do it through our database. But because of the connectivity issues that we were having, I opted to have the query sent to an Excel spreadsheet. And the Excel spreadsheet was in compatibility mode, which was something that I was not familiar with and didn't realize that when I was then filtering the information and seeking out case categories that would be of the type articulated in the information provided on October 22, namely, first offense DUIs, for example, or retail theft matters. So looking for case categories that included drug and alcohol and also theft offenses, but not moral perpetude, where we would be required to present to the commission those matters for revocation. So in querying out the case categories for drug and alcohol and the theft offenses, unbeknownst to me, the number was actually capturing all of the complaints that we had had that were identified as those case categories. And that's where the casual gross number of 1,000 came from. So the number that I should have presented was actually more like 357. So I do apologize for the confusion, but I think it does highlight the need for a reliable and consistent database. And it's something that we have been working very, very hard to obtain. And right now, we have a stable way of doing the things that we're doing, but that was one of the unfortunate consequences of not having a reliable system, so.
Thank you. So just.
Highlight one of the challenges. So I think with that number, you can understand that initially, when we were starting to use the Pennsylvania Justice Network to capture criminal justice information against the over 850,000 educators in Pennsylvania, we were capturing quite a few people. And when we really took a closer look and realized that many of those individuals may have never taught, there weren't any exacerbating factors associated with those DUI offenses, that's why I feel very comfortable including those in the information. And it's really a much smaller number than 1,000.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. And so just so that we're all clear, it's limited, then, those cases that you're null processing or dismissing, whatever you might call it, those are just limited to those smaller retail thefts and first-time DUIs?
Well, I can tell you that those are two categories where I feel comfortable saying that probably across the board, if you're seeing those types of allegations, and we may still file a complaint based upon the information, it just depends on the facts and circumstances. So I can't say that across the board, we won't be filing a complaint on a first offense DUI. Or we will be dismissing a complaint for a first offense DUI. I think probably that is over, that is probably the rule, but it's not a 100% absolute. As I tried to really articulate in the information provided on October 22, we don't ever choose to not initiate a complaint or choose to close a complaint without seeking disciplinary action, without a thorough review of the relevant factors. And as you all are aware, you know, those would include the seriousness and circumstances surrounding the misconduct, the extent severity and imminence of danger to students, other educators, or the public, whether the misconduct involved sexual misconduct or sexual abuse or exploitation, the status of the victim, if any, including the victim's age or special vulnerability, the harm or adverse impact to students or other persons, the harm or adverse impact to the educator's employer and to the profession, if the misconduct or violation is an isolated occurrence, part of a continuing pattern, or one of a series of incidents, the educator's state of mind at the time the misconduct occurred, such as negligent, reckless, or intentional, that's the mens rea, the pecuniary benefit or other gain in yearing to the educator by virtue of the misconduct, whether the conduct was criminal in nature, the likelihood of a recurrence of the misconduct or violation, the age and level of maturity of the students served by the educator, the danger that students will imitate the educator's behavior or use it as a model, the educator's level of experience, educator's past performance and performance following the misconduct or violation, educator's past disciplinary record, including warnings or absence of a prior disciplinary record, good faith effort to make restitution or to rectify the consequences of the misconduct, meaningful and sustained period of successful rehabilitation, impositions of other penalties or sanctions, including local disciplinary action, the educator's attitude and conduct during the disciplinary proceedings, the deterrence impact of the sanction, penalties imposed in other cases for similar violations, other extenuating circumstances or other factors bearing on the appropriate nature of a disciplinary sanction. And so those are all of the factors that the commission would consider when a disciplinary action is brought to them. Those are also the factors that we consider internally every time we make a decision about whether to advance or close a complaint. And we also use those factors when deciding, as an interested party, whether to initiate a complaint based upon pre-complaint material. Though I don't think our office could ever.
So my question was, we're grateful for that information. So I think it's still not clear whether the cases that you're not taking up or null processing or dismissing are limited to retail theft and first-time DUI cases. I'm not suggesting anything about your prosecutorial discretion of whether to take those cases up and proceed on them, so much as that I'm asking whether in those two particular incidences that you set forth in your 23-page memo are the only two kinds of incidences that you would dismiss, null, prost, or not take up?
I don't think so. No, I think there are probably other situations where we would decline to advance a matter to the commission for the imposition of discipline. And we would use the factors that are articulated in the information.
Okay. Based upon everything that you've shared with us, you run through the gamut of those sets of inquiries in order to determine whether you take up a case or don't take up a case, and that's sort of your prosecutorial discretion. And so I think maybe what you're really saying to us is that you're being a little bit more lenient in your approach to prosecutorial discretion in general in terms of allowing some of those cases where you have discretion as opposed to the mandate cases to not push those forward. Is that correct?
Right, that is correct. We need to use our resources in an appropriate way and focus on the cases, particularly those where, as you point out, there isn't a requirement that we advance them to the commission for revocation. So we need to be mindful of the cases involving allegations of boundary violations, allegations of sexual misconduct, allegations that will not be captured any other way if we do not investigate them, if we do not prosecute them, and bring them forward ultimately to the commission seeking the imposition of professional discipline. That doesn't mean that we aren't going to be pursuing other types of noncriminal action against educators. For, for example, theft conduct or conduct that would involve sexual harassment, things like that. So it's not that we would not look at other types of conduct, but we, you know, need to always be mindful of what the responsibility is of PDE to ensure that educators are fit to discharge their professional duties, focusing on the safety of students and others in the Commonwealth. So.
Okay, well, I think what I'm hearing is that anything which falls within your purview as a discretionary offense to prosecute is something for which you may be more lenient as you move through time in order to have a lessened caseload. But you're still vetting things through that long list that you read us in terms of what your inquiry process is to ensure that there's a proper vetting of each and all cases so that there's nothing that falls through the cracks that could potentially lead to further harm to children. Is that about right?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, I think. I think.
Finish up, if I could, with one more follow-up question. For the cases that are, for the cases that are like a retail theft, isn't that per se a crime of moral perpetude? Aren't all thefts crimes of moral perpetude?
Well, as I noted, and perhaps Shane Crosby on behalf of the commission could speak to that. As I noted in the materials, that was presented to the commission at one point in time. And we presented the argument that it was a crime of moral perpetude, and the commission declined to find that it was a crime of moral perpetude. So we consider the conduct as theft conduct being concerning for sure, but we do evaluate each case relative to the factors. One of the issues there was the potential for a variety of gradings, if I recall correctly, and how, I think there was a concern about an inability to maybe parse out the sections as it related to grading for the retail thefts.
Yeah, if I could just.
Well, retail thefts.
Are we about there, guys? Are we almost there? Are we almost there?
Yeah.
I mean, I love this conversation. It's two great lawyers having a great discussion. But I think if it's something that we really want to delve into, maybe the chair could appoint Jonathan as the chair to look at all the legal ramifications and the iterations relative to the thousands of scenarios that I'm sure she surfs through. You know, we have to figure out.
Start a new committee. I just want to make sure that we are not leaving a stone unturned in our responsibility to help ensure the safety of the students of Pennsylvania.
Of course.
And I trust the work that's being done. I think it's, what I see and hear, it's very thoughtful, it's very analytical. And the number-one criteria I keep hearing reiterated is to ensure that it doesn't have a negative impactful aspect on children. And I'm comfortable with that.
Great, thank you very much.
Well, I certainly, I appreciate Dr. Perry's thoroughness of the questioning. I am not an attorney. And I appreciate Jim's perspective that this may be something to elevate because my primary concern, this is Dr. Bracy Green, I'm sorry, is that it appeared, Sarah, that when you were initially reporting on this prior to the report that we just received, it appeared when you were presenting it that you were shutting down cases as a matter of efficiency. And that's what stirred my concern about what I was hearing. It's like, okay, you had capacity to really deal with those. Meant to Dr. Perry's point, it seemed that you were using discretion that was out, that was at your, within your purview to shut these cases down. And so in the interest of making sure that professional conduct is being maintained, I just need to understand two things. One, how you're going to improve your efficiency. And it sounds as if you move that. And it sounds as if you move that, towards that direction with a new IT framework for a new database. I hope everybody will get training on to use and to disaggregate data for us. And I think the other issue is again, determining, um, you know, if there are more than those two specifically cited issues of retail theft and DWI or DUI. Um, if there are, if, if you have a, a scale of ten items that you use that trigger your discretion almost immediately, it would be helpful to know that because there's got to be more than the two. And I think that just using those two caused for me another level of concern. Um, so again, I, I, I defer to uh the august Mr. Barker saying that we could certainly move on with this and have maybe not a committee, but if the chairman would um allow us to perhaps have just a, a, an extended conversation because the way it's being presented is not as reassuring to me as, as I would like it to be.
Well, Dr. Bracy Green and, and Madam Chair, if that were to happen, uh, I, I wouldn't oppose it. Um, but I would suggest that it fall within the purview of the School and University Safety Committee.
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna say that, yeah. Um, okay, so are there any other questions or comments? Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Crosby and Ms. Dorito for your report. Um, okay, thank you. Um, we'll now turn to public comment. If there are any members of the public participating via webinar that would like to address the State Board of Education, please indicate by selecting the raise your hand icon on the toolbar. Staff will unmute you one at a time and your comments will be limited to three minutes per person.
Erin, as of this time, no one has raised, raised their hand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if, if there are any members of the public participating only via telephone that would like to address the State Board of Education, will unmute the line now and ask for the names of each person who wishes to speak. Staff will record a list of those who want to speak and then we'll call on you individually to provide comment. Your comments will be limited to three minutes per person.
It does not appear that anyone would like to speak.
Okay, all right, we have no action items for this meeting. Um, are there any announcements for the board before we adjourn?
Uh, Karen, this is Karen Malchano. I just wanted to provide a status update on the two regulatory packages that have been approved by the board at recent meetings. I wanted to let members know that the package of proposed amendments to chapter forty-nine currently is under review by the Office of Attorney General. I do expect that that review will be completed and the public comment period for chapter forty-nine uh should be opening shortly. We will send an electronic notification to uh individuals on our stakeholders list who have an interest in making comment uh on that proposed set of amendments to chapter forty-nine so that they are all aware of when that opportunity formally opens. Uh, further, the proposed amendments to chapter four that were approved at our September meeting, uh, which accounts for updates to our science standards as well as a number of technical amendments to chapter four uh have been submitted for review by the executive offices that are uh required to have an opportunity to review and sign off before we advance that further in the process.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Um, okay, any other announcements? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meet, this meeting of the State Board of Education. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Agress.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next meeting will be January thirteenth and fourteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, looks like the way things are going, it may be another virtual meeting, but we'll keep you updated on that. So you all have a great holiday season and stay safe. Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
See you in January.
Karen.
Thank you, bye.
Hey Stephanie, Stephanie, just for the record, this is Jim Agress.
Yes.
I've noticed that uh Dr. Barker keeps moving in closer and closer to me. And, you know, if you could keep him away from my space, I'd really appreciate.
I'll do what I can, Jim.
Bye.
Have a great, have a great holiday.
Everybody, be well.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay.